Okay, everyone, it's 3:06. Today is April 25th, 2023. It's 3:00 PM and...
Is that on?
I don't know. It says it's on.
Just a minute. We've got to give them a minute.
It's like the old mics. You had to let them warm up.
We get all trained by the city clerk and then we have to wait. Is it warming up, this new...
I don't know. Let me text.
Modern technology.
There we go.
There we go. We got a cathode array tube.
Testing, one, two, three.
So today is April 25th, 2023. It's 3:07 PM now. This is this Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do we have any introductions or announcements today?
I was just scanning the audience to make sure there wasn't anyone I needed to introduce. So we do have a couple of announcements, Mayor. The first announcement is budget award. Congratulations to the Budget and Finance Department. They recently received a distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah, no doubt. The award represents a significant achievement and reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. The association said the award... The award recipients have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and provide an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, advances excellence in government finance by providing best practices, professional development resources, and practical research for more than 22,500 members and the communities they serve. The FY 2023 city budget document is available on the city website, prescott-az.gov. Go to the city management and then budget and finance section from the homepage, or just search budget. For more information, please refer to the attached information from GFOA on that website page presumably, or to contact the finance department at 928-777-1408 and ask to speak directly to Mark Woodville. Congratulations to our finance department for a job well done. Second announcement. Beginning Friday, April 28th, Prescott welcomes Whiskey Off-Road Mountain Bike Race and Festival. The event features over 2,300 riders of all skill levels taking on the beautiful and challenging trails of the Prescott National Forest. There is fun for the whole family as Whiskey Row becomes the start/finish line for the races. There will be bike-related vendors as well as live music throughout the weekend. Note that the city has posted street closures on its website and social media channels, and I believe the Daily Courier even had a map in today's paper as well. Residents and businesses are urged to review the information and obey all barriers and detour signs. This is a live race event with riders moving at high speeds through downtown streets at times. Drivers in the area during the event are urged to use caution and follow all posted signs. Street closure plans are designed to allow all impacted businesses to remain open during that. However, customers should call ahead in case of revised hours, parking, or access points. Note that the Cortez Street, Old City Hall, will close at 4:30 on Friday, April 28th, due to the whiskey off-road races taking place in the area. This affects utility billing and community development counter service. Cortez Street, City Hall will reopen Monday, May 1st at 8:00 AM. Let's have fun and safe weekend.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dan Hurlberg from the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll conduct. Thank you, Pastor.
Dear God, we come to you today to pray for our city council. We ask that you guide them as they navigate the complex issues facing our city. We pray for wisdom, discernment, and understanding as they make decisions that affect the lives of our citizens. We pray that they will seek your guidance and be open to your will and direction, and that they will always put the needs of our community first. Finally, we ask that you grant them peace and grace as they fulfill their duties and responsibilities as elected officials. May they always be mindful of the trust and faith that has been placed in them by the people of our city. We pray all of this in the name of the One from whom all blessings flow. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in pledging allegiance to our great republic and this beautiful flag that represents it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we'll have roll call now.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Thank you. We'll now all read and present a proclamation recognizing the 125th anniversary of the Arizona Roughriders. I think we have a representative here, Chris Lamberton from the Scottish American Military Society.
Wow.
And Mayor, I'll have you come over here while our IT department works on the microphone
Well, as you all can see, the high technology in our new council chambers are proceeding in a very deliberate and measured pace. So I think by the end of the year, we should be where we expect to be. Proclamation. 125th anniversary of the Arizona Roughriders, May 4th, 2023. Whereas the iconic monument that stands sentinel on the Yavapai County Courthouse Plaza, Northside, is dedicated to the first Arizona Volunteer Cavalry, commonly known as the Roughriders, who fought gallantly in the 1898 Spanish-American War. And whereas the Arizona Roughriders were recruited and captained by William "Bucky" O'Neill, who was mayor of Prescott at the time. And whereas Mr. O'Neill, who came to Prescott in 1882, had also served the citizens of this community in many capacities, including court reporter, newspaper editor, probate judge, railroad and mining developer, and county sheriff. And whereas Mr. O'Neill was prolific at a card game called Pharaoh, which was popular in the saloons of Whiskey Row, he successfully bucked the odds and thereby earned himself the nickname of Bucky. And whereas during the chaotic landing of the Roughriders in Cuba, Bucky, while in full uniform, jumped in the water in an effort to save two Buffalo soldiers who had fallen in, thereby earning the considerable respect of his troops. And whereas Captain William "Bucky" O'Neill was killed in action while leading his troops against the Spanish on San Juan Hill in Cuba on July 1st, 1898. And whereas he was interned in Arlington National Cemetery on May 1st, 1899. And whereas the iconic monument created by the famed sculptor Solon Borglum honoring the Arizona Roughriders and their leader was unveiled on July 4th, 1907, nine years almost to the day after the death of Bucky O'Neill. And whereas on O'Neill's tombstone is written the words, "Who would not die for a new star on the flag?" William "Bucky" O'Neill was a true Arizona hero. Now therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the Pres... City of Prescott, Arizona, to hereby proclaim May 4th, 2023, as the 125th anniversary of the Arizona Roughriders. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this 25th day of April, 2023. And I want to recognize Chris Lamberton, who is the commander of the Scottish American Military Society for bringing this whole issue to my attention and to organize the event that will be taking place next week.
Thursday, the 4th, at 12:00 noon.
You know, I'm going to ask Chris to say a few words here so you can hear him directly.
Ladies and gentlemen, 125 years ago, America was in its first declared war, foreign war. Under Secretary of the Navy Theodore Roosevelt conceived the idea of a volunteer cavalry regiment to be composed of rough-and-tumble cowboys, hunters, miners, and other Westerners. Prescott's mayor, Bucky O'Neill, former sheriff, probate judge, newspaper editor, and publisher, among other things, was among the first to answer the call, offering to raise the entire regiment. The War Department had to pull out a map to see where Prescott was, out in the Arizona Territory. Bucky was thanked and given permission to raise a company of men. Bucky himself was the first, mustering in on April the 29th. The next day, he resigned as mayor, though the city council deferred accepting it for two months, presuming the war would be over by then and he would simply return to his In just over three days, more than 1,000 men from all over Arizona sought to enlist. Bucky took the best. Some were veterans of the Indian Wars, and at least one was a Confederate veteran. On May the 4th, what was known as Company A of the first U.S. Volunteer Cavalry assembled at Courthouse Plaza by the bandstand, where speeches and presentations were made. Captain Bucky was presented with an engraved Colt revolver by the city council. Bob Brow, owner of the palace where many of the budding Roughriders had spent the previous week in celebration of their impending adventure, presented the regiment with its first mascot, a young mountain lion named Josephine. The company marched up Montezuma Street toward the Santa Fe Railroad Depot, accompanied by citizens and the Prescott Band, mostly Union Army veterans. The band played "The Girl I Left Behind Me." The train was loaded with foodstuffs, provisions, and their horses, and off they went, to the shortest declared war in American history, lasting just four months. It was the first time that men from the Arizona Territory were to be called to national military service. 19 years later, as the state of Arizona, they would again be called for the Great War. The observance on May 4th will become an actual part of the history of Prescott and Yavapai County. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the proclamation.
I've already done that. We'll move on to an open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. Mayor, I do have a couple of cards, so I'll just call everyone up one at a time. Steven Sidlovsky.
Arrow on the side. Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Good afternoon, beloved Mayor and Prescott City Council, Prescott I should say, and wonderful citizens. I'm Lee Brother Steven Gerard, I think speaking for about the sixth time now on the new possibility of a Prescott personhood city. So I'll just open up with some of my notes. God, our Creator, designed us as persons first in our mother's womb. Think about that. We're persons here, living and breathing, but we were also persons peacefully developing in our mother's womb. I've delivered to your wonderful city clerk Sarah a hard copy of an email that's already been sent to all of you. Maybe you've already reviewed it, this past April 20th. That email will talk about my continued efforts with personhood throughout Arizona. And I gave you a wonderful updated copy of the Personhood Strategic Action Plan. And if you adopt this Personhood Strategic Action Plan, it gives guidance to the mayor and city councils of any charter cities. It gives guidance to church and community leaders of any particular cities. For instance, forming an interfaith coalition of covenant churches will actually help amplify the new solidification and amplification of personhood. It even gives citizens and business owners loving guidance. And you can promote personhood at street block parties, dances, festivals, concerts, parades, and of course, even your wonderful National Renowned Rodeo. Okay? I continue to encourage all of you to consider putting me on the agenda by Mother's Day while I'm here in your locale, whether it be with your charter review commission, just to give an initial brief. It's probably going to take three or four briefs. I continue to encourage you specifically, Mayor and City Council, to actually pass the Personhood Resolution by Mother's Day, or possibly Father's Day. And if you can't juggle that ball in that amount of time, maybe by Christmas. I'm delighted finally to let you know that I was able to get with your Yavapai County elections. I got the results of the governor's election specifically for the city of Prescott, and I've done some number estimates. It is now believed that if the citizens were to vote this November, that 58% of Prescott's citizens would vote in favor of the new personhood concept for the city of Prescott. Please enjoy the hard copies of everything. And again, I'll close with a song. The joy of the Spirit of God, His love for His creation, tap, tap. The joy of the Spirit of God, His love for His creation. Keep working on personhood. God bless you all. Jesus loves us all. Thank you.
Andrea Gregory.
My name is Reyna Yoss. I'm not going to go first because I'm having pain in my back.
I didn't hear what you just said, ma'am.
Oh, I said that I'm... My name is Reyna Yoss. I'm going first.
Okay. Please speak into the microphone.
Okay, I'm the abortion. I'm speaking for millions of unborn...
Can you take the microphone down?
Ma'am, please speak into the microphone.
You have to speak into it.
Okay, sorry. I'm speaking for the millions of unborn babies. No choice in making the decision that their mother made in aborting them. And many of those women lived to regret it for years. I am one of those women. 33 years old, I had an abortion. I was almost four months pregnant, and I had an abortion. I still think about that baby. I haven't forgot that baby. And I know it's kind of hard for you men to understand, but you were once babies. You were once small children. And you know what it's like to have a mother kiss you and love you. I didn't love that baby. I let it go. If I would have known now, when, when, the first time of a heartbeat, I think it's 12, 12 weeks, I was almost four. And so I, I feel sorry for those women that mourn, but what really scares me is the women that don't, and they continue to have abortions. And those are human beings. They're human beings, and they have a right to live. So, standing here in front of you, letting my personal business out, I just want you to know that you all were babies, and your mother loved you. I loved my kids, but still I remember that one baby I let go. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Yost.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for having me here. I've been learning a lot about personhood through Brother Steven. And to be quite frank, I never pictured myself to be standing here today in front of the council, neighbors, friends of Prescott. But I am here because other people, I guess, my parents decided to have me, and I'm so glad to be here. I can't imagine what my community would be like, or my friends, you know, if I wasn't around. You know, we give a lot. We spend time with the lonely. We visit, we contribute, we pay taxes, you know, better our roads, do a lot. So I just can't imagine not being here and somebody just snatching my life out of me. I don't think my husband can imagine his life without me or my daughter. And sometimes we may be pain in the buns, or, you know, whatever, but we are human beings. We contribute, we smile, we love our communities. And I'm honored to be here and to have a voice and to say, please, let's consider defining the personhood. Let's protect it. Let's make sure our future is protected. And since I've been here in Prescott, we're short on doctors and a lot of dentists, so it'd be nice to have more life, more babies, more crying, more joy, and, you know, future lawyers, and, you know, everything else to make our world a better place. And in conclusion, I would like to say that Prescott could be the first... It is the first territorial capital of Arizona. We should become the shining role model for all charter cities in Arizona as Prescott's new personhood city. We Prescott citizens, and I am a new citizen here, desire to vote in the new personhood language into our charter. We care about tomorrow. We care about our children, and I hope that we can make sure they thrive and survive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me as this good? Hello, my name is Jacques Daniel Kemplin, and I've lived in the Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley area since 1996. So I know this area pretty well. I know the people of Prescott and Chino Valley and Prescott Valley alike. And I know that people here, they, they support life. They're pro-life, you know, the majority, not all, but, you know, it's, it's a pro-life area. And I know that the citizens of this area, for the most part, find abortion to be a horrific procedure, you know, ending the life of precious innocent children. By adding personhood language to our, our city charter, what that is, is personhood means that it's declaring a child already a person with the full rights of a person from the moment of conception. And of course, a doctor can't just end the life of a person. Eugenics is not currently allowed in, in the state of Arizona. In Oregon, it might be a little different, right? So by declaring that a fetus is a person, by adding that language to our city charter, that will, that would be a declaration by the people of Prescott that we are a pro-life city, or a pro-life area, and we are against the murder of innocent babies. And I believe that the citizens of Prescott would like to declare that about our town. I think we take great pride in the fact that we are a town that supports life from conception to natural death. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
You got to fill out a form. You have to fill out one of the request to speak forms and present it to the city clerk.
They're on the back table. Kathleen, how do you say your last name, Kathleen?
Clark. Okay.
Please proceed.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Clark. I live in the top of the hill at Prescott Ranch, and I'm sorry the fire marshal and the police officer aren't here, but I just wanted to say a couple of things along that topic. First of all, most of the pieces of property that are for sale now at the ranch are mostly air. And people, if they buy them and they build a house on that air, the, the land here is all rocks. It hasn't got much clay or even sand. It's rocks. So when the rain and the snow come, the water percolates down, runs down the mountain, onto the houses down below them. My house is near the top of the ranch, but there are still some places up above. When the first houses were built up there, the building codes were much more lax than they are now. Many, many people that I know, not only at the ranch, but in the hills and PV and everywhere else, have had thousands and thousands of dollars of their property damaged because the water goes down through the rocks, comes up through the bottom of their property, and their house splits, has to be repaired. We've spent thousands on our house, and it's a big house. But water came down, you know, from snow and flooded the whole bottom of the house. We, we've got cracks in the walls and the ceilings. We're going to have to have our house lifted by a company, about $40,000 to $50,000, and propped up. We've had to have so much work done. Many people, if they buy those lots that are left now that are just air, they will build a house on stilts. The water and snow that come down will come down on the properties below them and destroy the houses below them. That's what's happened to many people, and I know them personally. So, and we have a blank lot also near our house that we bought just to have some land. But the houses that are being built on these lots that are very steep, my house alone, the driveway is 80 yards long, very steep. And every time it snows, we have to pay guys to come and shovel all of that just so we can get out. Now, we always, if we know snow is coming, we park our vehicles at the top of the cul-de-sac. Sometimes we can't even get up the cul-de-sac because it's steep as well. My husband has a heart condition. If he has a heart attack, we're stuck. And so are the emergency people that come to rescue him. I just want to say, I wish the fire guy was here, but if people buy those lots and build on those lots between our houses that have been there a long time... on those lots between our houses that have been there a long time, most of the houses below them will be damaged.
Now that's all.
Very good. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. Does any member of council want to pull any items off the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull items eight H and eight I.
Very well, I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items.
I move to approve items, consent agenda items A through G.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Councilman Sishka and Councilwoman can tell me, are your options not popping up?
No.
Can verbally give me your votes, please?
Yes.
Yes.
And Councilwoman can tell me your mic is on because you're being heard on the broadcast, but you need to speak directly into the microphone so that it can be heard in the chambers, okay? So, that passes seven zero.
Very well, Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. The reason why I pulled item H is that it deals with cybersecurity. And recently, our city emails were hacked. Ten thousand people received an email from me with a bogus invoice and with a virus. So, I just was asking you to maybe enlighten us as to how, what the solution is, and is this contract part of that solution? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It a hundred percent is part of the solution. It is a solution. So, before I came over here today, not loud enough?
No, directly into the mic, Nate.
Oh, sorry. I should listen.
It's fine, I can say it twenty-five more times, it's all right.
So, before I came over today, I actually checked, because we have a new email firewall in place. And what that firewall does, almost entirely what it does is, well, let me step back. So, we've received forty-two emails exactly like the one that you received today. So, if you look at the city of Prescott, there's seven hundred mailboxes, seven hundred people with a mailbox. I'm not a math person, but if you take forty-two of something out of seventy, seven hundred, that's a decent percentage. That means there's forty-two chances in a lottery that one of those people will do the wrong thing, which is to click on the email, put in their password, and then the same thing happens, and the same thing happens, and the same thing happens. What's different today versus what was different maybe two, three weeks ago, is the exact type of system it's in this agenda is live, it's sitting there watching these emails, and it eats them. It's very difficult for it to be fooled, and it said, hey, I see this email, one of them came from a law office, it's not legit, here's why, I am going to keep it so these forty-two city employees do not ever see that email, and the cycle is broken. Now, why that's important isn't just that this stuff comes in constantly, it's that it's a pattern. And in this case, the pattern is now different. We've seen it since September, the attackers have a certain pattern. We adjust to it, and then we stop it, and it goes dead for a while. And now, this is a new pattern, so it would've gotten through otherwise. And we would have a very different outcome right now, or I wouldn't be necessarily standing here talking to you, I'd be out scrambling, trying to keep the same thing from happening again and again and again. And the core problem here is that there's a lot of, you hear a lot of hype about AI right now. It's not exactly AI, but it's designed to mimic human speech pattern. Sometimes the emails are stolen, so they come from people you know, and they're modified. So, what it does, it puts the person at a keyboard in a bad position of, this looks like it's legitimate, it reads like it's legitimate, maybe I click on it, maybe I don't. So, what the system does is because it's a machine learning, it basically takes the people out of it, and so far, in the last three weeks, we've seen twenty-three hundred of these types of things stopped. Where before, odds are, most of those would've kind of slipped through in the night. And now, I'm down to seven hundred people have to decide, is this legit, not legit? And it only takes one of those people to make a bad decision for us to be right back in the same boat over and over and over again, for the particular email you're talking about, the one that you received. What was interesting about that when we analyzed it was that the, so what they do is they steal your credentials. Couple days later, they hop on your mailbox. In this case, it was someone in Nigeria logged on your mailbox, and they start blasting out thousands and thousands and thousands of email in forty-five minutes before we caught them. In this particular case, the people that those emails went to was highly, highly targeted. It was manufacturing, aerospace, construction. That's not some person in an internet cafe in another country doing that. That's like a nation-state kind of thing. That's the kind of scale we're talking here, where these are smart people, they're not gonna go away. So, what you need is a different kind of paradigm of how do you stop that? Well, that's what this item is, is this is how you stop it, this is how other people stop it. And it's been extremely effective, just sitting there watching it, comparing notes, making sure it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Thank you. It sounds like it's just a constant onslaught and constant vigilance. Thank you. Moving on to item.
Hold on a second, Mayor Brotem.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, Kathy, I'll be quick. So, Nate, one of the questions, I will have two questions. When Councilmember Rusing's email got hacked, I think I sent you a screenshot where I actually didn't only get the email request that she had sent, but she also sent me a text message at the same time. Have you figured out what was going on there, just out of curiosity?
So, this is, it's clever, I'm not gonna lie, like, these are smart people doing this. It's not completely automated, but it's highly automated. So, what they do is, I got my stack of emails I'm gonna send, right? So, I get into a mailbox, I'm gonna start sending emails like crazy till you stop me. But I'm also gonna look at, like, Councilmember Rusing's contacts, and I'm gonna collect those and maybe start hitting those up too, because you know her, she knows you, maybe I trick ya. I also might do something like, I'm gonna hide responses to you. So, if you send out a bunch of crazy emails to people, they're like, hey, is this legit? Well, they set up a rule, you don't see those emails, right? You don't know you're doing it. So, that's how it ends up on your phone, that's how it ends up to different people. And what they try to do is continue to fool you, and then it's the people that you know. And now, it might fool somebody out in the audience that you interact with, and the same ripple keeps going out from this pond.
So, a follow-up to this is, is this technology, is there a risk that we tighten up so much that then legitimate inquiries don't come through? And I guess that's, you know, that's, I've heard anecdotally from constituents sometimes that they say, hey, I sent you an email. And I'm like, I try to be pretty good at checking my email, and I'm like, I didn't get it. And is there, is there some danger in that?
There's always a danger with cybersecurity of, I'm gonna be lazy, it's too much work, I don't understand it, I'm a dumb IT guy, I don't know how to do it. Then you're gonna be roadkill. Not if, but when. Flip side is, we're gonna crack down, we're gonna crack down so hard that now nobody can send actual emails, and now the tool is worthless, right? It's a balance. So, in this case, we've seen twenty-six hundred emails passed through the system. I've seen three of them that are actually legit. Now, the math there is like point oh oh something, very small. That's way better odds than, hey, everybody, don't click on this stuff. Even though you may go to cybersecurity training, which we have, which before we did all this, we didn't, we started phishing our own people, right? We were somewhere like sixty percent of the times we tested ourselves, we failed. Sixty. Not good. Now, we're under ten percent, yay, oh, it takes one person. So, it's, we get fifty thousand emails a week. One out of fifty thousand's all you need to fail. That's all we need for attackers to win. So, on the needle of too much, this guy's a kook, cracking down too hard, to like, I don't think they're doing anything, this is an appropriate step to a problem that's proven over time to not go away, but actually intensify. And that's what's scary. It's not, it went away for a while, but it's come back, and it's very, very, it's evolved, and it's very clever. Because now, it's like, not only am I doing this, but I'm stealing some emails that we've sent. And you'll see, like, you know, you sent me an email, I reply, that's legit, I replied back, it's legit. And at the very top, they'll put a little link. You're like, oh, this is legit email, I'm gonna click that link. Doink, starts the pattern. Where are they getting these emails from? So, all they gotta do is break in, now they start getting your contacts, your emails, and that's how the cycle propagates. So, I would say it's a, if we don't do something, it's gonna be the same sad story eventually. And what's gonna happen is we're gonna get ransomwared. Because that's the other part of this, isn't just, I'm gonna be annoying and send emails, it's like, now I'm gonna try to take your data hostage, because I can steal your credentials and pretend like I'm you. I might steal Mark Woodfield's credentials because he's a CFO, that's a really important person to pretend to be. I might pretend to be the mayor. That's where it goes. So, yeah, I would say it's an appropriate, sober, and effective way to address this problem.
Any other questions or comments on this item? I'll entertain a motion. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move that we approve item eight H.
Second. Motion is second, please vote.
Are we safe to click on this?
I hope so. Fingers crossed.
Thanks, everyone. Passes seven zero.
Very good. Now, Councilmember Rusing, eight I.
Thank you. I also pulled this one, I just have a rule of thumb, anything that's in the six digits financially, I like to have a discussion of. And I see that it's mostly for community development, for permitting, plan reviews, builders, contractors. And several years ago, we approved software to do most of the permitting and everything online. And also, it was intended to speed up the process, streamline it. Also, COVID was happening, and it was, sounded like a good plan. And then, we also approved software to fast-track the mass production builders too, to free up time so that our local individual custom home builders could get their plans approved in a shorter period of time. So, is that, is that the purpose of this software here? Could you go into more detail?
Yeah, sure. It's the same software. So, it's not like we're switching horses in the middle of a course kind of thing. What happens with software is, especially today's world, so I might start out with software, and it lives here in Prescott. That's great. Everybody's about cloud now, right? Because it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hype with cloud stuff, but one of the legitimate things about cloud is, if I, as a software company, am controlling where this is installed, I control a lot of the variables that come with it, I can spend more time making the software more useful, more powerful, and not have to screw around with, Prescott has a really weird setup. Prescott Valley has an even weirder setup. Chino Valley, crazy setup. That's kind of the traditional software, is everybody's doing their own thing, and it adds variation to it. When you step over to cloud, the pro is, that variation goes away. The pro is also, the software companies are gonna spend their best and the most time adding features to that. And it's kind of designed, the DNA that is essentially built to be mobile-friendly, friendly to the public, think of it like, basically, it's an improvement on what we already have. Instead of like, this is horrible, we're gonna switch to another company, it's a logical step that we knew we were gonna take with this software in particular. COVID derailed that like many things. And the net, the net delta for cost here is like ten thousand dollars a year for us to go to the cloud. It'll help Chelsea's group, it actually does help IT because it's designed to be accessed. And it is a measure of security, when you have something in arms-length, if someone were to get in, yeah, I can run around and ransack our stuff, but I can't touch that to somewhere else, right? So, it's a considered, weighed decision that we're making to move forward with this, that we have to do anyway, like, it's the software we're using. But in this case, we're gonna take it to the cloud for a small amount of money because it makes more sense than not doing it.
So, we're renewing the contract and taking it to the cloud?
Yes, ma'am.
Have we, have we done any, shall we say, checking to see if this has fast-tracked anything or improved, improved any?
That would be something that I'm sure Chelsea could address, or George, that's not an IT thing exactly.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to know if it's panning out, you know, is it results-oriented?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. Chelsea Walton, interim director of community development. So, to answer your question regarding the software, it's called Community Development, but we call it by Central Square, which is the firm that produces it. But anyhow, it has given us the ability to turn around permits faster. I will say that members of our building community and development community would say, not fast enough. But what it allows us to do is not duplicate efforts when it comes to applications. So, in the old days, before the system, we were doing a, receiving a paper application, staff was duplicate, entering all of the information, having two sets of plans, and then having to farm them out to the various reviewers. Now, with the current system, all of the customers fill out the application online, it immediately uploads to our internal system, and those plans are then prepared, and all of our reviewers can review them simultaneously and offer comments. It also provides immediate review live, in live time for our, for those folks that are very sensitive to timing on their permits, they can see review comments as soon as the reviewers complete their review. So, they can see in real time when a review is being performed. So, that's added value for our, for our customers. To speak to the fast-track item, we created, with the help of our Public Works folks, a mass-grading permit that isn't really relative to the software component, it's just a separate process. So, our production builders have used that for a couple of years, and were able to crank those out in about five days for those that have model plans that need a site-specific permit. So, everything's looking good, we're fairly happy with Central Square, and we're looking forward to the new features that the cloud may offer. We understand from our IT folks who've dug into it, that it offers a lot more capabilities for our mobile apps, our inspectors in the field. So, we're excited about the conversion.
Okay, thank you for that response.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or concerns from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move that we approve item eight I, city contract number two oh two three dash one nine four.
Second. A motion is second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Very good. That completes our consent agenda. And we'll now move to the consent ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number two oh two three dash one eight two seven, authorizing the sale of city real property to Monizuma Heights Investors LLC, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property to Monizuma Heights Investors LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sale, and adoption of ordinance number two oh two three dash one eight two eight, in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said
Okay, I think we have two actions.
Just one, Mayor, can adopt consent ordinance items as one, unless somebody would like to separate them out and have further discussion.
Hmm, interesting. We do have two, two ordinances, so we could combine those.
Correct, they can be adopted as one motion.
All right, do we have any questions or concerns from council?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent ordinances as presented.
Second. Counselman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, Councilman Tenny, I had pushed my button to request to speak before you had given that motion. It's not showing up on the mayor's screen. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this ordinance, but I do have a question about the project because I don't recall this coming to the council prior to this ordinance. I was just wondering if maybe the mayor and council could be informed. wondering if maybe the mayor and council could be informed what's happening at that location. Because from our third-floor view, as we look out the window, we can see that project and what's happening, and it looks very heavy-handed. As a council member, sometimes constituents ask me what's happening, and I don't know what's happening. And it would be nice to know what's happening at that property location.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I can make a comment here. When I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, seven years ago, that's when this first proposal came to the attention of the city.
So that's probably why I don't know about.
That's probably why.
I wasn't on council then.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Chelsea Walton, Community Development Interim Director. So Monazuma Heights had a lot of challenges initially, and the developer, Mr. Don Allison, is here if you have questions for him. So that's why there was some, some gap between when it came to P&amp;Z and when they started construction. But Monazuma Heights is a multi-building apartment complex project. I believe there's 144 units total permitted up there. They're still going through the vertical construction permits, but they do have their grading permits issued. And this action in front of council today, this ordinance, effectuates the sale of a portion of right-of-way to the east and north of the project that's adjacent to the steep cur, steep slopes on the curve at Willow Creek Road before it turns into, not Willow Creek, Whipple, before it turns into, Monazuma, before it turns into Whipple.
Monazuma turns into Whipple.
I apologize. So this ordinance is just relinquishing the, the right-of-way that is really not usable for the city to the builders for, for their project.
So obviously, this project was approved prior to our water budget and all these kinds of things. I mean, this was approved a long time ago before this, this council was seated?
Correct. Before the new water policy. But I do think they had a water service application that went through the prior water policy channels.
Okay. I was just curious because I personally didn't know what was happening at that location, and I wanted more information.
Okay. Fantastic, sir. Yes.
Quite frankly, it's, it's at the, this steep slope of rock. So it comes almost all the way down to the sidewalk on the north side of North Monazuma. So that right-of-way really has no function for the use of the city. And ceding that to the developer allows them to kind of maintain the upper part of that cliff or slope part, along with what they're planning to do at the very top.
Thank you for that explanation.
Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I think this is not a situation where we're ceding it at no cost. There's a, there's a remuneration of about $10,000, I believe, to the city. So you're exactly right. I don't see any significant public interest in retaining it. And there's certainly a public interest potentially in, in selling it, so.
$10,000.
All right, very well. I'll entertain a motion for these two combined items on this consent ordinance.
I restate my motion as previously stated.
I'll restate my second. Already stated it, and we've had a second. So motion is second. Please vote.
Did your options go away? Okay. You can just verbally give me yours.
Is that why?
Yeah, you need to be on the agenda item.
I'm a yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm a yes as well.
Oh, my goodness. Passes 7-0.
Very good. And good luck on the continued development of that property. That's a big, challenging piece of work there. So good luck with that. All right, we'll move on to the liquor license, item 10.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License Application from Eric Lyon Burton, applicant for the Betsy, location 211 North Granite Street. Staff has reviewed, and everything is in compliance. There have been no public comments, and the notice has been posted for the required 20 days.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Is the applicant present?
They are.
Why don't you come on up and describe your new facility there and what you're planning on doing with it? The Betsy.
The Betsy. Betsy Ross. Thank you all for the time. So you've approved the Series 7, and we've sourced some very difficult bottles to get around the country, around the world. So we'd like to be able to sell those and keep that business, that revenue, local to Prescott instead of going other places to try to source those. So that's the reason behind the Series 10.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you're naming your location after Betsy Ross and being right across the street from founding fathers. Although, I don't think she particularly qualifies there. But I know, I think she shared a pew in the, in the North Church in Boston next to, I think, George Washington. And when she originally designed the Betsy Ross flag, it was as, as a consequence of that relationship. So good luck for that. And it's an interesting concept. So good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion is second. Please vote.
I swear I'm in the thing.
I think I'm in the thing.
I swear I meant it, too.
Your request to speak is on, so your vote should be there. But you can verbally give it to me if it's not popping up.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you very much. Passes 7-0.
I'll log out and log back in, see if it helps.
Mayor, I move to approve the recommendation for liquor license number 234715 for a new Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License Application for the Betsy, location 211 North Granite Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
I'm a yes again.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Very good. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda, item 11A.
Legislative update, that's me. I will, I'll be making this brief, Mayor, mostly because, as you probably read in my update, there has been no work done at the legislature the last two weeks about. They ended up expelling a member of the House, a Republican member of the House, which means that with the margins of votes, as they are, that comes to a standstill. And so they are working on replacing that representative now, and they're supposed to be back to work today, which I haven't seen if they are or not. But basically, the, the list of bills that we were tracking two weeks ago, which I won't go through tediously with you again, the same bills, same locations in the process, same status. We're very much awaiting for the budget process to begin. They're, they're having their, their meetings and their discussions about it, but no real progress that we've been made aware of as far as the budget goes. But our Granite Dells bill will be involved in that, as well as airport funding through ADOT. So, so those are the big takeaways, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this point if you have them.
So what, what day are we in the legislative session?
We, we're well past 100. It's probably 107 or 8, maybe 10 by now. I've, I've kind of lost track. As you know, they're supposed to adjourn around the day 100, which they have not done. And so we're.
Long way to go.
Yeah, we're looking at a long session again.
Any questions or concerns by the council?
Mayor, are you seeing my request to speak? Or is that not working in there?
Nope.
Okay. May I, may I speak?
Please, please proceed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Tyler, you mentioned the, the member who was expelled. I know that's relatively extraordinary. Is it, you're understanding that one of the few people being considered for replacement of that expelled member is that expelled member?
That is correct.
How about that?
Arizona politics.
So I think the county there has to make a selection on who they're going to name to replace Liz Harris.
They do.
Did, did that happen today?
It, it was supposed to happen either yesterday or today, from my understanding, but I haven't heard for sure if it has.
No, I didn't get the memo either.
Yeah. I'll, I'll be checking on it.
Any other questions or concerns? Oh, Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Was on the, in the Courier today, but I'd like to recognize SB House Bill, Senate Bill SB 1392 appropriations Arizona State Parks Board, State Park for the Del Rio Springs Verde River State Park. I would just like to say that I think this is a wonderful idea and that I would support that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tyler, for that extensive update. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item 11B.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update regarding the Mayor's Charter Review Commission. I just have a very brief update for all of you today in follow-up to the study session that Charlie Arnold, the Chair of that commission, provided back on the April 11th meeting. We did take all of council's feedback from that study session discussion back to the group, and I will be working with the legal department, I don't see Matt in here, but I will be working with the legal department to make a couple of revisions per council's comments. And then, some of them, we will not be making for legal reasons. We will cover all of that when the commission returns for another presentation at the June 13th study session. And I wanted to also advise council that there was an oversight on my part for one of the revisions that the Charter Commission has proposed, which was related to the city manager contract. Their proposal is to update the charter language to make that language come into compliance with the city manager contract. And rather than a supermajority for removal of the city manager, make it a simple majority, which is the same for the other two appointees to council, myself and the city attorney. So Charlie will address that more specifically also at the June 13th study session.
Very good. Any questions or concerns from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
There we go. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take this opportunity to address the request that we've had for the last six weeks, probably in a public setting by Stephen, to request personhood language on the city charter review. And I'm just thinking that maybe for the public, it would be best if we settled that so that it doesn't keep coming up and up and up and up, that if there's a decision, whether that's going to be put on the Charter Review Committee now, or if that's going to be tabled till later, so that we don't continue to have to address this every week.
Yes, Councilman Moore, thank you. So I've followed up with Mr. Sidlofsky multiple times in regards to the emails that we have received from him that have been forwarded to all of you, and in regard to his addressing us during the open call to the public. And I have advised him on those occasions that the, the city's Charter Review Commission will not be discussing the personhood charter amendments at this time. Should the Charter Review Commission continue beyond this year's general election and wish to invite Mr. Sidlofsky or anyone else from his group to a future discussion, they will contact him at that time.
So it's not on the agenda for this year's charter review?
That's correct.
Because that might help him and his organization to realize that there's really no value in coming back week after week, month after month, if, if that decision's already been made by the Charter Review Committee.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And I will state that the Charter Review Committee has selected about a dozen items that probably have the highest priority for some amendment to the city charter. But there are additional, probably lower priority items, that the Charter Review Commission is likely to consider after the general election in November. Councilmember Rusing?
I would like to commend the mayor for forming this committee to tackle this job because it was long overdue. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you. And I think it's important that by raising this issue, I'm, I'm raising it not because I'm not pro-life, because I am, but because I think it's important for the public to know that there's a process. And I think it's probably, obviously, we can't talk amongst ourselves because of open meeting laws. If we talk to more than three council members, we violated open meeting laws. But, so we, we haven't talked about personhood. But I think, if I gauge the council correctly, that I think it is an issue that people feel is maybe more of a national level and not a city level. That, so I'm just saying that. It's not that I'm not opposed to personhood in the sense that I am pro-life, but I also feel like it's important that we know that this issue is not going to be addressed at this time, so that it doesn't keep coming before the council week after week, month after month.
Thank you, Councilman Moore. So this item taking no necessary action. We'll move on to item 11C.
Thank you, Mayor. Approval of a request for renaming Granite Dell's No Name Creek to Elizabeth Creek. So Mayor and Council, you all reviewed and discussed this item at a study session a little over a month ago, based on two requests that staff received for the renaming of the creek. We did, at that time, receive public comment. And then, I also followed up per the policy by opening up a 30-day public comment period for citizens to submit any comments that they may have in favor of or opposed to the renaming of the creek. Staff during that time only received one public comment. That was that they were in, in favor of renaming the creek, but that they thought it should be Ruffner Creek rather than Elizabeth Creek. That information was included in your packet. I don't have any further update, Mayor, but we do have some comment cards from the audience today. But you all are welcome to speak further regarding the renaming, if you'd like to do so now.
Mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. This might be for an applicant, or whoever's putting the application together, Sarah. So if you don't know the answer, that's fine. But is there going to be something that, like some sort of signage or something that'll distinguish the existence of this, of this creek in the name of Elizabeth?
Yeah, Joe, do you want to come and address that? Because I know that you've been working on some things.
Just because I was curious.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Joe Vane's Recreation Services Director. Yes, the Granite Dell's Preservation Foundation has generously stepped up to donate a plaque, and they'll be working with the Ruffner family on the verbiage for that. But it'll be placed along the Peavine Trail in the location of that creek.
That's awesome. I just, it seems like, you know, I would hate for it to be something that we did, and then no one can, no one, people walking there don't, don't have the awareness of what we've done. So I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good thing. It's an excellent way to honor Elizabeth Ruffner's contributions to our community.
Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, I'm just thrilled to see our new naming policy in action.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Yes, I want to, I'm not sure if my, is this off?
It's, it's not off. You're being heard on the broadcast, but you're, you need to speak directly into the microphone. It's not going over.
I don't hear it out there. Okay. I just wanted to recognize the Ruffner sisters here, and just say again, I just told you earlier how lovely your mother was, and how concerned, and she loved the city, as you know. And she passed it down to you, and I think this is a wonderful thing. And Cecilia, thanks for your support, too. I know you knew her very well, and you've made, over the years, several wonderful comments about her, all true. So thanks again.
So we have public comment?
We do, Mayor, Joanne Olers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Joanne Olers, Chair of Save the Dells. I see here with this renaming of No Name Creek as witnessing a win-win-win situation. The creek gets a legitimate name. No Name was a name, but not a real name. The wildlife and their ecosystems certainly are being protected by the work that went into preserving that land. And Elizabeth and her family even, along with her, are honored with the good work that she has done. I didn't know Elizabeth Ruffner. I learned of her mostly through looking at the archives at Charlotte Hall Museum with the Open Space Alliance documents that had been collected and preserved by a couple of members of the public. She did such fantastic work, very bravely contacting people, gaining support for open space lands, working very hard on the protection of Glassford Hill, as a matter of fact, from the hard on the protection of Glassford Hill, as a matter of fact, from the late 90s and into the early 2000s. So I'd like to encourage us all to continue the tradition for people, wildlife, and community that Elizabeth has shown us. It took a lot of time and a lot of years to protect that wildlife corridor. And I think that we could come away again with a win-win-win situation, honoring the people of Prescott with open space, Elizabeth with the name, and also wildlife with the corridor that we hope could be expanded upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne. Any other public comment?
Yes, Dottie Morris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I also am so much in favor of having this named after Elizabeth. I feel so privileged in having met her and volunteered with her. She was a truly amazing person. She volunteered, even when she was in pain. She would show up. If she were supposed to be there at 11 o'clock, she was there at 11 and ready to volunteer. What an amazing person. The Granite Dell's Preservation Foundation has been working to put together an application to the state of Arizona, and with your approval today, it will be submitted to the state of Arizona. So the maps of Arizona will officially have that name of Elizabeth Creek through the Granite Dells. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dottie.
That's all, Mayor.
I would...
Well, I think we should hear from the Ruffner sisters. I appreciate your patience as we finally got to this important item. So Melissa and Becky? I know I've talked to a couple of folks trying to figure out how the No Name Creek came around. I'm sure it was a couple of initial explorers in the area saying, "What's the name of this creek?" "I don't know. It doesn't have a name." "All right, we'll call it No Name." And finally, hundreds of years later, now we're going to be able to honor it for your mother. I know when I was elected to city council about five years or so ago, and Elizabeth was sitting there in the council chambers, and she looked over at me and says, "You better protect my city." And I said, "Yes, ma'am."
When my sister Becky told me that a creek was going to be named after my mother, I wasn't impressed. My mother has worked on things like the bicycle area where bicycles can move safely. She's moved, she's worked on so many things, but she never forgot her children. Her children and her family were first. And then she would come to different groups, and she would involve and listen. And there was a gentleman who was new in town and had seen that mom would listen to everyone, and then she would make her comments. And he came to her after this meeting, and he said to my mother, "You're bossy." And my mother said, "No, I'm not. I'm well-informed and willing to share." Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Mayor and members of the council, I wanted to thank you. This is a lovely occasion today for our whole family, and this is Everly Elizabeth, who's obviously named after my mom. We're looking forward to going out to the creek. And I wanted to thank especially Granite Dell's Preservation Foundation for their good work and their advocacy on this issue. The Granite Dells was a very special thing to mother. She was out there many times as a young bride, and over the years for different, different things. And I'll always remember that picture of Mrs. Rusing and my mom in that little cart for the Save the Dells Day out there. So thank you all very much. It's a wonderful thing for my mom, but more importantly, it designates an important place in our wonderful new Granite Dells Regional Park, and that's a victory for everyone. So thank you so much.
Fantastic.
We haven't passed it yet. You know, I got one right here.
So how many copies and which newspaper?
Okay, Elizabeth, I kept my word. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve renaming No Name Creek to Elizabeth Creek.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. Please vote.
Sarah, I'm a yes.
I'm a big yes.
I'm a bigger yes.
I don't know if I can top that.
Well, it appears everybody's yes because it passed a 7-0.
Very good. Well, that kind of made my day. We'll move on to 11D.
Thank you, Mayor. SIT E23-002 and WSA 23-005, Site Plan Review and Water Service Application for an 18-unit apartment complex on approximately 0.98 acres. Zoning is multi-family medium-density. Property owner VS CK Investments LLC. Applicant Stro Architecture. Location APN 111-11-131, 836 Valley Street.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, councils. Tammy Duette, Community Planner. Next slide, please. Look at that. So as stated, this is a site plan review for a proposed 18-unit apartment complex. It comprises of two buildings that are proposed, and each building is two stories. Parking meets code requirements with adequate fire circulation. Per the new water policy, any application that has to go through the Water Issue Subcommittee for Water Approval also has to go through a site plan or a planning project. So that's why we have the water service application and the site plan in front of you today. The subject property is a multi-family medium-density, is just north off of Fair Street, across the street from the Frye Shopping Center. It's an infill development. There is a single-family residence on the house currently that will be removed for the new proposed apartments for infill development. Perfect location, across the street from the grocery store, very walkable for the community. It's a great location for this type of project, from a planning standpoint. Here's the imagery of the area. Like I said, there is a single-family house on the property that will be removed. And here's a close-up of it, and we have Frye's Grocery Store right across the street to the east. And also, a couple months ago, we did approve another apartment complex right on the other side to the west of it, just for comparative. So we do see this area starting to be redeveloped with multifamily apartments in the area. This is the proposed site plan. We have the two buildings, Building A and Building B. Each will be two stories. We have adequate circulation for fire to get through the property and to, and it meets all their code requirements, and it meets all our parking requirements. Here's a proposed rendering of it, to kind of show what it's going to look like there. Here's what it looks like now. There is, like I said, the single-family residence. There is lots of trees on the property. Hopefully, they try to preserve as much of the old growth trees as possible. Here's another view of the property. At the April 4th, 2023, the Water Issue Subcommittee unanimously recommended approval of the water service agreement as presented. Currently, the property uses 0.64 acre feet for the single-family residence. For the anticipated apartments, they're anticipating 2.3 acre feet. So the difference, which you'll be approving, would be 1.66 acre feet per year. And then the site plan review, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the site plan application at their March 30th, 2023 meeting, unanimously recommended approval of the site plan as submitted. That concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions that you may have, unless you want me to talk more.
Does council have any questions or comments on this?
No.
Councilwoman Tenny?
No, sir.
No?
I've got lots of thoughts, but none that are worth...
Well, is the applicant present?
Yes, the architect is here.
Doug, you want to come up and describe this? Looks very similar to that development on the corner of Hillside. I'm not sure, was it Hillside and Bagby?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Doug Stroh, 1937 Rocky Dells Drive. This is another infill project, same client that we did a complex for probably about two or three years ago, a couple lots down. And it's turned out very nicely because it's, like you said, walkable to all sorts of things, restaurants, hospital, you know, the farmer's market, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a, I think, a perfect location to maximize the utilization of that land. And there are some big trees, and we're going to keep as many as we can that are not within the footprint of the buildings or the parking lot. They're mostly large cottonwood trees, so they do provide a lot of shade, and the water table is pretty high in that area. So it should be a very nice complex.
So you did that, what is it, a 14-unit development just down the street from it, behind True Value?
Yes, it's right behind Foothills Bank, yes. We did that two or three years ago, I think, something like that.
Well, I know it was quickly fully occupied, and...
It's been pretty much fully occupied all the time. And that has a three-story section in the center, but this is zoned for two stories, and so that's what we did. All two-story, or two-bedroom, two-bath apartments. And our client, Virgil, decided to make them a little bit bigger, add some more storage, and larger decks and different things like that. So it's, I think it'll be a very nice little complex. It's got a Ramada and a barbecue area, so, and plenty of parking.
Well, I'm very supportive of this type of infill development. They're not, you know, huge units, but they're significant in the location. And being able to provide those with walkability and having access to our current public safety services just makes so much sense. I'd rather have 10 of these than one 200-unit apartment complex and things like that. It just makes so much more sense for the community, and I appreciate your work on developing this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor, may I ask?
Connie.
I'm not sure if you got my button.
Thank you very much. I'm actually seeing this for a change. Councilwoman Kentelme?
Mine was not functioning properly. Doug, would you, would your client or you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I know, I'm sorry. My mic isn't quite working out here. But is your client considering this workforce housing? Is it being considered workforce housing?
No, it would be market rate.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that the, the architecture of it with the asphalt roof as opposed to clay, there's no, like, stone ornamentation on the outside. It's just going to be a lot easier to build that and a little less expensive.
I'm sorry.
I know. Sorry about that. That's okay. Don't worry about it.
Steve, can you lend her your mic?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Councilwoman Kentelme, why don't you try to use Councilwoman Sishka's mic?
Never thought about that. Okay. Much better. Okay. So Doug, what I asked was, did your client consider this workforce housing? You replied, "No," that it will be at market rate. Of course it will. But the architecture of it is more simple, you know, a little less expensive to build because it does have the asphalt roof as opposed to clay roofing, and there's no stone ornamentation on the exterior. It looks like it might be stucco, and is there a little bit of brick on there?
Well, it's hardy plank.
Yep.
And breaks up the stucco. And we do have some split-faced masonry that we use to support the stairs.
Okay.
And it is an architectural asphalt shingle.
Yeah.
And it fits well with the residential neighborhood architecture in that area.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I feel exactly like the mayor does about the infill. It's just that with the building products, being a little, especially today with the market the way it is, just being a little bit more conservative on what you're using on the outside of it.
Oh, you have to be. The prices have skyrocketed.
Yes.
Interest rates have doubled. So I mean, this client is confident that he's going to be moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve SIT E23-002 as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Sarah, I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Me too.
Thank you.
And I move to approve...
Whoa, 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 hold on. Passed a 7-0.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Go.
Now you go.
I move to approve WSA 23-005 as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
I'm a yes.
Thank you.
I'm, yeah, I think I'm a yes on this, too.
Passed a 7-0.
Very good. Now we can move on to, on to item 11E.
Approval of city contract numbers 2024-001 through 2024-032 for 32 professional services agreements for on-call services contracts. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Gwen Rowitch, Public Works Deputy Director. No, you did not mishear, Sarah. We're asking you to consider approval of 32 separate on-call professional services contracts for our on-call professional services program. This would be for the period of 2024 through 2029. And this is a really important tool in the toolbox here at the city. Essentially, we pre-qualify firms in their areas of expertise so that we can save time when we have critical projects that we need to move forward with. It's not really that much different than a single individual project where we would pre, where we would qualify a firm, but we just do it for all of the firms at the same time. So if you would indulge me for just a couple minutes, I'd like to kind of review with you some of the procurement options that we have for professional services and why we utilize an on-call list. So essentially, through Arizona Revised Statute, the city has multiple ways of procuring professional services. We're also guided by our own city procurement code. But in the Arizona Revised Statutes, we have the ability to directly select a firm with no advertising, simply based on the fact that they are professional in that field, as long as we do not exceed $500,000. Do we ever do that? Sometimes we do that, but it's usually for a particular reason. We might do that with a firm that we're already working with, and we'd like to extend the work that they're doing. Sometimes we do that with firms that are proprietary to the products or things that they sell, because they're the most qualified to help us along with those kinds of projects. But as a general rule, at least in the Public Works Department, we do not direct-select professionals for projects unless we have a very good reason to do so. The other way that we can procure professional services is through what's called a request for proposal, or a notice inviting a bid. Those are solicitations that announce a project, describe it, and then we solicit bids. But those types of procurements are more geared toward the cost for specific tasks or cost for specific items that are being purchased. Since this list is for professional services, we rarely use an RFP or an NIB process for procurement of professional services. We do, however... We do, however, most frequently use what's called a request for a statement of qualifications. And that's a solicitation where information is provided to the city from the firm based on their qualifications and their competency to provide the work that we're seeking. It's not forwarding. Sorry, my first time at this podium. If you'll forgive me that one. So why do we use on-call professional services contracts? We use them because contracts are awarded based on demonstrated competency and qualifications, and we do use the RSOQ process that's outlined in Arizona Revised Statutes to choose the firms that are placed on the list. Each firm is pre-qualified. In other words, we're going to pre-qualify 32 different firms today, if the council so chooses. And one of the primary reasons that we do that is because we don't have to go through this same process every single time we want to do a project. We can simply choose a firm from this pre-qualified list. Now, the firms that are on the list can be qualified in more than one category. When we place the RSOQ out for solicitation, that firm will decide the areas that they wish to be reviewed and potentially selected for, based on their own experiences and what they believe the city is seeking in terms of their professional capabilities. Not only can we have a firm be qualified in more than one category, but the city can have several firms on our list within each category. You'll see in the attachment to the council memo that in some categories, we only have one firm, and in others, we have as many as five. Firms on the on-call list never have a guarantee of work. There is no guarantee that we would use them at any time during the three to five years that we would have a contract with them. So how does a firm get onto the on-call list? What's our process for an RSOQ? We follow Arizona Revised Statutes. The first thing we do is write an RSOQ and publish it in a newspaper of general circulation as well as posted on our website. And in that RSOQ, we describe the types of work that we might be seeking from a professional registrant. We open publicly, we publicly open sealed RSOQ documents that are received by the due date, and we form a selection committee. So the selection committee is made up of staff members, not just within Public Works. Sometimes we might choose a staff person in another department that might have cause to use our on-call list. Or in some cases, we can even choose an outside person to sit on our selection committee if we feel they have the appropriate background and qualifications to understand what they're reading in the solicitations that we receive. Each solicitation that we receive is scored, and the scoring for that firm is identified in the RSOQ itself. So going into the process, the firm knows, for example, we're going to give them five points if they're here in Prescott local, we're going to give them two points if they're from Phoenix, and we're going to give them zero points if they're from another state. That's just one example. Obviously, the scoring is specified to the type of work that that firm would perform. And so a lot of times, they'll receive points for other projects that are similar to the work that we're seeking, the experience of their staff, the availability of their staff. So they get scored on several different criteria. Once the scores are tabulated, we identify the top three to five firms. Here we are at step seven in the process, council awarding a contract with a recommendation of an annual award amount to be based on the number of categories in which they qualify. You also see in one of the attachments where each firm, you can see where each firm, there's a dollar amount associated with that contract, and it's directly related to how many categories that particular firm was chosen for. Typically, a firm will remain on the on-call list for up to three, for three years for the initial contract, with up to two one-year renewals. The firm can choose to not renew in years four and five. We didn't see that in the last on-call. We've, in my 15 years here, we've only had an on-call list once before, and where we had 42 firms on the list. I'll go into that here next. So once a firm is on the on-call list, how do we decide which one we're going to use, right? Because that's a valid question. Some of the categories have one, some have as many as five. The first thing we do is identify the task that we're looking for them to do, and we review the firms within that category that we think can meet that need. We choose the firm with the most relevant experience in the category, and we provide them with a scope of the work that we're seeking. We typically have a conversation with the firm. We'll call them up, tell them, we're considering using you from our on-call list. This is the project that we're trying to do. Do you have staff availability for this project? Do you have, do you have any questions about the scope of what we're asking you to do? And can you meet our schedule? Because oftentimes, when we choose from the on-call list, we're looking for something to be expedited or started right away. Once the firm says, yes, we're interested, we believe you can provide this service to you, then we receive a quote from them based on the scope of work that we give them. We may not necessarily agree with the fee that they send back to us based on the scope of work. So at that point, we negotiate with the firm. We might negotiate the scope of work, we might negotiate the pricing. If we cannot come to terms on those things, then we move on to the second firm on the list that we believe is most qualified to do the work. I can tell you that once the city terminates negotiations with a specific firm, let's say, for example, we go to firm number two, and their prices are even more expensive than firm number one, we cannot go back to firm number one and negotiate with them. That is one of the rules. So when we receive their fee or their proposal to provide the work, we compare it to other work that's recently been done to make sure that it's fair and equitable within a range. Are there any questions about that? Okay. So for the on-call professional services program, we...
Counselman can tell me.
Apologize.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Gwen. Oops. No, it's really loud. Gwen, back on number five, how do you, oops, I'm sorry. Yeah, go back. Verify that the pricing is fair and reasonable to the area and the state. Who does that verifying? Is it a competitive process? I mean, do you have somebody on staff that would actually know the whole scope of the project and what the current pricing is? Is there somebody that keeps up on that since sometimes the materials are changing daily? And, I mean, that's a little exaggeration, but not nowadays. So I'm just curious, how that, how do you verify that?
So it's a very good question. And yes, we do, we do keep a running tabulation. We call them bid tabs for projects that we have done. And we, here in Public Works, and Tim will get up in a minute and talk about this, too, but we have such a wide range of work that we do in Public Works that we often have a comparable. And while the comparable, generally, we like to see comparables within a year or two at the most. We can see the costs that they're proposing or the fees that they're proposing, and we have a pretty good idea. We have a lot of professionals on our team. We have engineers on our team. We have our capital program managers. We have five of them. They all have expertise in different areas of work, anything from pavement to water to sewer to other, you know, to other things. And then we have two engineers, actually, we have three engineers on staff right now as well, who use their professional judgment to tell us if the fee that they're proposing is reasonable and customary or if it's excessive. So we also have the ability to go to local firms, also other local firms, if they've done work in that regard, to ask their opinion. But we, to my knowledge, we don't generally do that. But we have the ability to do that if we so choose.
Gwen, you mentioned a $500,000 cap, I guess it would be called. Is there, is there a reason, this is in lieu of a competitive bid pricing, correct?
So you're comparing contracting work, construction work, to professional services?
Okay.
And they're two different things. Contract construction work is a line item. You bid by line item under MAG and technical specifications and the city's technical specifications. And we actually put out a bid tab when the contractor bids. When we solicit for professional services, we do it based on competency and qualifications.
Okay. Was there ever a time that you did a competitive bid pricing even on those services?
For professional services?
Yeah, for professional services. No, okay. All right, thank you.
The RSOQ process is not based that way.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, it's, the professional services are defined pretty well throughout the Arizona Revised Statute. So it's specific to planning, engineering, that type of thing, and it's all defined. But it wouldn't allow for the construction-type situation you're talking about.
Yeah, they're two, two different things. So how effective was the on-call program in the last five years? Well, we did utilize...
Counselmember Rusing had a question.
Oh, I just wanted to ask. I noticed in the packet that Equestrian Way was one of the projects used for the on-call bidding, and that was a massive water break with a lot of destruction of the roadway. And so this method is used for, like, emergency projects, too?
So counselperson Rusing, yes, it is used for emergencies, but not only, it's not just used for emergencies.
Okay.
And if, in a couple minutes, I'm going to have Tim come up and give you some examples of when he's utilized this list and how effective it was for us as a community. Is it okay if I continue, mayor?
Please.
Okay. So how effective was the program? In the last five years, we actually utilized all 19 categories. In this round, we have 20 categories, but in the last five-year period, we had 19. We utilized 26 of the 42 firms on the on-call list in the last five years. So again, there is no guarantee of work. Just because a firm is on the on-call list, that's not a guarantee. In the five-year period, we spent $4.5 million in professional services, and they achieved 145 task orders. So once the contract is signed, when a project comes up, we issue a task order. That's what we call it. And we say to them, this is how much money is available in your contract this year. This is task order number one or task order number four, whatever it is, and this is the work we would like you to do. And we sign a task order, and we move on with the work, sometimes in as little as two weeks. So, Tim, would you mind coming up?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works. So I want to kind of go down the list and kind of give you guys a little more background on how we select firms, and Equestrian Way will be one I will talk about. But starting at the top of the list, so the W parcel, oh, W parcel ALTA survey that we did, we requested that Lion Engineering give us a proposal to do that survey work. And the primary reason we did that is Lion Engineering was the design engineer for the Airport Ruger Truck Main project, which went around that parcel as part of the FedEx development there. So Lion Engineering had the mapping, had the survey work, everything that some other firm would have had to go out and obtain. So that's why we requested Lion Engineering do that work. That was one of 16 task orders that we assigned to Lion Engineering during the course of this contract. Private development plan review, there were five firms on the list. I'll give you a couple examples of local firms. Civil tech engineering had four task orders dedicated just to private development plan review. Out of the 24 task orders, they were assigned total for the life of the contract in other categories. Just four, but four of those are for private development. Kim Lee Horn, another local firm, had one task order for private development. They had 18 task orders total over the life of this, over the life of this contract. Equestrian Way, and this is really, to me, is like the shining example of why this works for us. Kim Lee Horn was selected based on contracts they had, we acquired through standard procurement policy in regards to doing two other water main replacement projects. They were working on two at the same time. One was in Cliff Rose. But the water main break that occurred in Equestrian, on Equestrian Way, occurred on July 10th of 2020. By July 29th, we had signed a task order with Kim Lee Horn to do the design for the work. We had bid-ready plans by August 27th, and that was one of the things we talked about when we addressed them was, how quickly can we get this done? We issued an NTP to start construction October 1st. So from the middle of July till October 1st, we had the design complete, and we had a contractor onboard and underway. If we'd had to put an RSOQ out to acquire an engineer to do that design project, we probably wouldn't have started it till the first of the year. The Cliff Rose Mill and Payment Project, again, that was with Kim Lee Horn. Again, Kim Lee Horn was the design engineer for the water main replacement for that project. So they had the mapping information, they had all the survey work they needed to do. So that's why we requested for them to price out, doing the payment work out there. It's very similar to the Prescott Library Sidewalk Project. Kim Lee Horn was in the process. They did the Carlton Cortez Project in and around City Hall. This project was actually fast-tracked by the previous council. Councilwoman Orr was, it was a very, it was a project she felt very strongly about. So we moved forward with that. Kim Lee Horn, again, had a lot of mapping, survey information from that area. The Dexter Neighborhood Drainage Design, again, Lion Engineering, local firm, had a lot of information in that area, a lot of mapping information. They've done a lot of flood work in there. They also have a very good relationship with Helm, which is another firm that's very good at flood mapping, and that's why we chose them for that one. And then, lastly, on public relations, Beta PR, for example, 17 task orders over the total life of the project. A lot of times, we use Beta for in-house design projects. A lot of our other design projects, the firm that's awarded a contract, if it's a standard procurement, will procure their own PR for that. Beta PR seems to be the firm that a lot of the local firms like to use. But, for example, the Gurley McCormick Water Main that went in a few years ago, that was done in April 2019. That was an in-house design, so we procured Beta PR to do the public relations for that work, as well as the SRAED on pavement repairs. If you remember a couple years ago, back in 2019, we did some pavement repairs and did a chips seal project through the Granite Dells Corridor, again, in May of 2019, another in-house design, so they were very helpful in that. And then, as we mentioned, Equestrian Way, because of the expedited nature of that project, again, we acquired the PR firm outside of the consultant. And so, like I said, hopefully, it gives you a little background on why we select a firm in certain instances to do this work for us.
Thank you, Tim. Counselmember Rusing?
Thank you.
Counselmember Rusing.
We, we recently have been using a lab to do our PFOS testing. Would we need the services of a lab to be on this list in case we need somebody to test for various things or not?
So mayor, pro Tim, we do, the city itself has a lab for, that we use for most of our wastewater and water quality testing. And when we need to do things that are not within our purview, then we contract out with a laboratory that specializes in that. So in that particular instance, it wouldn't fall within the guidelines of a professional service necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments by the council? Any public comment on this?
No, mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number two, numbers 2024-001 through 2024-032.
Second?
Motion is second. Please vote.
As I have been for all my previous votes, I'm a yes, Sarah.
Thank you.
I'm a yes for all 32 of these.
Thank you.
I hesitated on number 17 for a while. I've gotten over that.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Gwen. Thank you, Tim. Obviously, a very thorough process, and aligning it with the Arizona Revised Statutes, I think we can be pretty confident this will be well-utilized. So I will close our voting meeting with a quote here, since we're constantly...
Wait, we have one more item.
No, we don't. That's it.
Okay.
No, we don't.
11F on the regular...
No, I published an amended agenda.
Yeah, we amended the agenda a couple of days ago. So we're constantly referencing the impact of inflation on a lot of our projects. So I thought this would be appropriate. Another great quote from our president, Ronald Reagan. "We don't have inflation because people are living too well. We have inflation because the government is living too well."
True.
So with that, with that said, this meeting is adjourned.